Good morning, everyone. All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dustin Kurb with the State Building Code Council. Before we get started, I want to give you an idea how this public hearing will commence. The State Building Code Council is holding a public hearing for proposed rulemaking to related related to 2021 Washington State Energy Code residential and commercial provisions. The proposed changes are posted on the rulemaking page of the 2021 code adoption cycle of the SBCC website and on the website for public hearing. The purpose of the rulemaking hearing and comment period is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to the WAC language. So this is your opportunity to let us know your thoughts on the specific changes. You can do so by testifying and or submitting written comments. Written comments can be submitted via email to sbcc@des.wa.gov. When you register to participate in this hearing, you indicated your intent to testify today. When we get to the part of the hearing, the hearing officer will call your name and invite you to speak. You will be unmuted if attending through Zoom, or you can approach the podium if testifying in person. Remember to state your name for the record. People will be called up in the order they signed up to testify. In order to assure that everyone has a chance to make comments in a timely manner, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The hearing officer will let you know when you have about a minute left to wrap up and when it's been three minutes and to finish up, so the next person can have their turn. Remember, you can also submit your comments in writing either via email or post-it mail. Just as a reminder, this hearing is for the specific proposed rules changes to the 2021 State Energy Code addressing concerns regarding federal preemption. If you have comments about issues that aren't specific to these proposed changes, please provide those to the staff separately. The deadline for written testimony is 5:00 PM November 22, 2023. As we do with all hearings, the audio will be recorded.
Okay, welcome. My name is Tony Doan. I will be the State Building Code Council's designated hearing officer today and will be conducting this hearing. I now call to order this hearing regarding WAC 5111R and WAC 5111C, Amendment of the 2021 Washington State Energy Code Residential and Commercial Provisions. I would like to advise everyone that this hearing is being recorded and the audio file will become part of the official rulemaking file. For the record, this hearing is being held on November 21, 2023, beginning at 10:04 AM via Zoom with teleconference options and in person at the Yakima City Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment on the revisions to the 2021 Washington State Energy Code Residential and Commercial Provisions. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, RCW 4230, and the Administrative Procedures Act, RCW 3405. Legal notice of this hearing was filed with the Washington State Code Reviser on October 18, 2023. The Washington State Register number for WAC 5111R is WSR 2321105, and for WAC 5111C is WSR 2321106. Notice of this hearing was also posted on the SBCC website at sbcc.wa.gov. This hearing is being held to consider testimony on the proposed CR 102. At this time, I will briefly explain the proposed changes. The council is entering rulemaking to modify sections in the commercial and residential energy codes to address legal uncertainty stemming from the decisions in California Restaurant Association versus City of Berkeley recently issued by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. The council solicited proposals to address these concerns and is proposing several changes to the energy code. In the residential provisions, the section specifying the use of heat pump space and water heating are removed, and section R406 is modified to use a gas heating baseline, which means the number of required credits is increased to adjust to this change to maintain the level of energy efficiency. Additionally, credit options applicable to gas appliances are adopted to R406. Minor changes were made in section R405 and Chapter 5 to correlate with the removal of the mandatory heat pump requirements. In the commercial provisions, there are two options being proposed. Only one of these options will be adopted in the final rule. Both options achieve the same effect, but reach them by different methods. Option 1 established a fossil fuel compliance path in section C401.3 and outlines within that section what other changes are required throughout the code. Option 2 makes changes throughout the code sections to establish requirements for fossil fuel appliances. Both options contain a number of the same changes. Both options also require an increased number of additional energy efficiency credits when fossil fuel appliances are used to maintain the level of efficiency provided by heat pumps. Both options also include the same new credit options for gas appliances. We will now hear oral testimony regarding the proposed changes. For the record, please identify yourself and whom you represent, if any. Please speak clearly so we can get a good recording of your testimony. In order to ensure that everyone has a chance to make comments in a timely manner, please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, we'll start with Mark Vosler.
Hello.
We can hear you. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mark Vosler. I am past president of Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility, and I am testifying in that role. Thank you, members of the commission, for this opportunity to speak about the proposed amendments to the State Energy Code. Having practiced medicine in Washington for 22 years, serving as a board member and climate program co-chair of the Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility, I'm here to urge the State Building Code Council to adopt Amendment Option 1 to the 2021 State Energy Code. The amendments being considered allow builders flexibility to choose appliances as they achieve energy performance and maintain the intent of the strong code already in place. Further delay in implementing clean codes will perpetuate the harm from heat trapping methane and carbon dioxide that gas furnaces dump into our air. Our state buildings produce twice as much NOx as all our power plants combined. That's oxides of nitrogen. I've seen patients whose heart disease was exacerbated by the heat and the smoke that we experienced in Washington last summer. Low-income communities and communities of color are exposed to far worse pollution indoors and out than white wealthy communities. Access to cooling is also a health inequity issue. Electric heat pumps increase climate resiliency by providing lifesaving cooling and air filtration as heat waves and wildfires intensify in our region. We're feeling the heat in our lungs, in our homes, and in our most vulnerable communities. Please ensure that there's no further delay on these lifesaving measures. Please adopt Option 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Tapio?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the council for allowing me to testify today. My name is Steve Tapio. I'm a building science team leader for New Tradition Homes, a production builder here in Washington State. We build 100% Energy Star above-code homes to be exact 3,277 homes to date. We are no stranger to building high-performance and energy-efficient homes, having won the Energy Star Builder of the Year award for 17 years running. Today, I speak to you on behalf of all home builders, both small and large. The energy code, as proposed in the most recent CR 102, simply put, is flawed. This code does not create a simple or streamlined pathway for compliance. There is no fuel choice, despite some weasel wording allegedly allowing such. Let's not fool ourselves, thinking that we are complying with EPC. Any attempts at putting together a pathway of options using natural gas for space or water heating is simply futile. It is laughable. No builder would attempt to insult any legitimate buyer by alleging that this outrageous related costs to do so are justified. If passed as proposed, this code essentially removes consumer choice. What about during electrical power outages? Are homeowners to simply freeze? Natural gas provides such energy security for times such as that. Of interest, the majority of the several thousand Energy Star certified homes that we have built in the past had natural gas and space, had natural gas, space, and water heating. In fact, it was more challenging to get homes to qualify as Energy Star while using heat pumps, using any of the existing modeling software. Something that I have not been able to figure out why, under the initial proposal prior to the EPC conflict and the Ninth Circuit decision, was I able to formulate a somewhat reasonable pathway going all-electric? And yet, with the newest CR 102 dated October 13 of 23, with the revisions allegedly allowing a gas pathway, it is now harder to stay on the original all-electric pathway, which requires at least an additional half-credit. The revisions to the energy equalization credits in Table 406.2 and the energy credits in Table 406.3 need to be recalculated. They are not accurate. Unfortunately, it's time to go back to the drawing board and come up with a better workable plan. That plan would be to forego this 2021 code and go straight to the 2024 code. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Helstern?
Good morning. I'm Chris Helstern, an architect and sustainability director from Miller Hall here in Seattle on behalf of Shift Zero in support of the amendments to the Washington Commercial and Residential Energy Code update. And I'm here to ask that you pass these amendments to protect strong codes and ensure that new buildings in Washington are as climate-friendly and cost-effective as possible. Specifically, we'd like you to pass Option 1 of the commercial code with respect to the changes that RMI has submitted to you in a recent November 20 comment. Specifically, we want to ensure that their amended language for the heat pump water heating credit, the removal of supplemental gas heating from air source heat pumps, and the clarification on the electrical readiness language, both available for space and water heating appliances, are included in this final code language. I want to just give you three brief, important reasons to pass these amendments. First, we need codes like this so Washington State can meet its climate targets and in an equitable way in order to address the state's second-largest source of greenhouse gas emissions, buildings. Second, while some of our clients are demanding increased energy efficiency, architects in the building industry need this continued environmental leadership from the state to help bring up the baseline for building owners who won't voluntarily meet the energy and decarbonization targets that they should. Raising the floor helps all of us to live healthier lives. And finally, the cost of an inaction or delay in action is too great. If we keep pushing off building responsibly now, it'll cost all of us more in the future because building retrofits are more expensive. And additionally, we know the human health and environmental impacts from not addressing emissions are much higher than project dollars. And even to just address the previous testimony, I want to say that natural gas appliances require electricity to spark the flame. So it's a bit of a misnomer to say that in the event of a power outage, you won't be able to heat anything in your home or building. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Kathleen Petrie?
Hello, thank you. My name is Kathleen Petrie, and I'm speaking on behalf of King County, and I'm requesting the approval of the proposed changes to the Washington 2021 State Residential Energy Code and approval of the industry-preferred option of the commercial energy code. We'd like to extend our thanks to the State Building Code Council and staff for the additional time and efforts you have devoted to this process these past many months. We believe these changes best reflect the intent of the strong energy code adopted last year by the council, supporting the transition to healthy space and water heating while keeping in alignment with the requirements of EPC. Moving toward building electrification will better support frontline communities who traditionally have greater exposure to pollution and who will bear the highest burden of costs for maintaining stranded assets. So we need to eliminate these appliances from new building stock. Electric heat pumps have an important role in mitigating the impacts of an increase in extreme heat events and wildfires, and they reduce utility bills. So we request your approval of these proposals, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Joelle Robinson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for your service, State Building Code Council. I am very grateful. I am up here in Watkins County. I have a three-year-old who's at daycare right now. And almost two years ago to the day, my parents' home, my childhood home that my dad built 53 years ago, was flooded with a foot of water in the home. My dad was 86 and my mom was 81 at the time. And so my family experienced the very severe impacts of the climate crisis as it had rained about a month's worth of rain in only two days. And my sisters and I were frantically trying to get them rescued by calling 911 and trying to find tractors with lifts and fishing boats. Eventually, they were rescued with a fishing boat, but it was very emotionally traumatizing and financially expensive, and then my parents actually had to move. So that's my personal side, and on my professional side, I just urge you as a climate solutions staff person to pass the State Building Code energy amendments for the residential and commercial, especially commercial Option 1, with the recommendations by RMI. Last year, thousands of Washingtonians from across the state made their voices heard to urge the SBCC to pass strong energy codes that will accelerate our clean energy transition. And of course, reducing emissions from new buildings is crucial to protecting our climate and our air quality and our health, as you heard from Dr. Vosler.
Sorry, I didn't hear the end of that. Have she done?
No.
Joelle, are you there?
Yeah, sorry. It said that I was muted. I'm almost done. Just electric heat pumps are, of course, a double win. Not only do they reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings, but they are providing heating alongside with cooling, which is only growing more important as our region sees more and more wildfire smoke and heat waves. So thank you again for your service and for your consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Jones?
I don't see him in our guest list at the moment.
Jennifer Gilliland?
She's unmuted.
Jennifer, go ahead. Jennifer? Okay, we'll go to Ty Jennings? Ty's in person?
Is the mic on?
Yes, it is. Go ahead, Ty.
Honorable members of the Washington State Building Code Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Ty Jennings, and I represent Cascade Natural Gas. I speak today on behalf of Cascade as a former code official, as a code educator, and on behalf of the people of Washington State. I ask that you please consider amending the filed CR 102 for both the residential and the commercial energy code to fix several errors. This process to amend the 2021 Washington State Energy Code started on May 24 and will now be completed in less than six months. Let's be real, six months is incredibly fast, and with such speed, we have some minor errors that must be corrected. Now is the time to do such. I would ask that each member of this esteemed council review my written letter. Within that letter, I provide thorough descriptions of each issue as well as proposed corrective actions. I apologize for my brief summary today, but I simply cannot speak to all of the details in the three minutes I am afforded. First, please note that the Small Business Economic Impact Statements within both the commercial and residential filings are highly questionable. In fact, the minor cost estimates for each industry are estimated to be exactly the same, to the penny, as the 1% of average payroll or 0.3% of average annual gross business income. These values were evidently created in a vacuum and do not accurately provide estimate of the economic impact small businesses will face. Failure to correct the Small Business Economic Impact Statements within both the commercial and residential filings will put these filings at odds with the Administrative Procedures Act and the Regulatory Fairness Act. This would open the door to further legal challenges or legislative action that could further delay the implementation of these codes. I, as much as anyone, want to see these codes move forward, but let's do it right. Next, I would also point out that several of the proposed amendments remain in conflict with EPC.
One minute.
Proposals considered today would force projects that include natural gas to achieve up to seven times the number of efficiency credits as a building using electric heating. And by mandating the use of heat pumps in the standard reference designs, this code would further prohibit the use of natural gas even when using the performance method. Again, I ask the members of this council to please review my written letter. I have identified many other areas wherein we must improve upon or fix errors in the proposed amendatory language. We can make these fixes now and avoid the inevitable stumbling and confusion project teams and code officials will face come March. Thank you for your consideration and time. I'd be happy to speak with any of you if you have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Gilliland's got her hand up.
Excellent. Let's go back to Jennifer Gilliland.
She's unmuted and should be ready to go. We're having trouble hearing her.
Jennifer, floor is yours. Okay, we'll come back and try that again. Scott Peterson?
Signed up as an in-person testimony?
Yeah. He's not online either.
Let me double check. No, sir.
Okay. We'll go to Keith Sanderson?
Yes, hello. Thank you, members of the commission, for the opportunity to speak with you today about the proposed amendments to for the 2021 State Energy Code. I am a current student at University of Washington, and I'm here today in support of the adoption of the State Building Code to adopt these amendments to the 2021 Washington State Energy Code Residential and Commercial. One thing that is implicit in my education is that you have to be proactive in building a future that you want to live and thrive and have good health in. The future outlooks based on climate change research really worries me that I will not even have a chance at a future with good health and a successful life. SBCC in 2022 took a great step towards the human health with the requirements of heat pumps. This is a great option for balancing the reduction of fossil fuels with cost effectiveness and economics. With warmer and warmer summers, heat pumps will also double as cooling units without any extra auxiliary appliances. This will help in communities that are inequitably impacted by these warmer and warmer summers. Today, we have the opportunity to strengthen Washington's leading charge against climate change. Passing the proposed amendment supports builders in appliance choice, provides legal future safeguards, and is a large step towards human health and reducing pollution in homes and in communities. In these uncertain times, supporting human health will always lead to future thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Parsley?
I'm not seeing them in the attendees list.
Okay.
Neither for Patricia Harris.
Patricia's in there?
I don't see her.
Neither of them? Okay. Is Patricia or Lisa in the audience at all? Okay.
Oh, I have a hand raised for Lisa Parsley.
Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
First, thank you for hearing me out. I'm an Olympia City Council member. I'm also the chair of the Thurston Litigation Plan Planning and Steering Committee. Our city likes Seattle, Shoreline, Tacoma, Belenham. I've already implemented clean codes with similar provisions around heat pumps as of 2021 State Energy Codes. Delay on code implementation will also delay consistent policy around the state, and that's a difficulty for builders and developers and actually residents. We need to have a consistent statewide code. We are relying on the SBCC's work to support our own climate action. Our community members are overwhelmingly telling us they want this work done. They need us to take climate seriously. Olympia, Townwater, and Thurston County all have declared a climate emergency. So please consider passing these forward and taking action because you will be helping not only the people of the state of Washington, the developers, the builders, and the city and the counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Patricia in there?
Not seeing her.
Okay. Let's go to Sarah Sutton?
Hello, my name is Sarah Sutton. I'm a Washington resident, speaking in my role as CEO of Environment and Culture Partners, a Tacoma-based nonprofit with a mission to accelerate environmental and climate action in the cultural sector locally and nationally. ECP supports amendments to these, the strongest climate-friendly building codes in the nation. These amendments maintain the efficiency standards of the original code while allowing flexibility for achieving those efficiencies and incentivizing all-electric approaches. This approach makes good climate action accessible to all institutions, including the often overlooked commercial building sector of cultural institutions. This category of cultural institutions includes museums, zoos, botanical gardens, and aquariums, which are an important part of community, state, and national climate action. We know that energy use alone in these institutions contributes 4 million megatons of CO2 annually to the U.S. carbon pollution case. This is according to new research conducted by ECP in partnership with New Buildings Institute. We also know that this climate action in all types of cultural institutions is expected by both visitors and non-visitors, according to research by Wilkening Associates in Seattle. The State Building Codes Council should adopt the proposed amendments so that Washington State can have codes that provide critical guidance and accessible compliance pathways and support for these charitable, educational, community-minded institutions trying to take positive climate steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Chu?
Thank you. Hello, members of the State Building Codes Council. My name is Jasmine Chu, and I support the America is All In Coalition, a national coalition of subnational organizations all committed to advancing climate solutions. I first wanted to thank the council and the committees who worked tirelessly through the proposed amendments. Like many others who have spoken today already, I hope the council will adopt these amendments to the 2021 Washington State Energy Code for both residential and commercial. And I specifically want to reiterate support for Option 1 of the commercial CR 102 with the recommended changes that RMI made in their comments submitted yesterday on November 20. Some of these recommendations include removing the allowance of supplemental gas heating and air source heat pumps. The inclusion of gas for supplemental heating for air source heat pumps in Option 1 did not appear in the tag or MBE meetings, so we believe it should be removed. Other recommendations include amended language for the heat pump water heating credit and also clarification on electric readiness being available for both space and water heating appliances. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope that after these hearings, the council can enjoy a nice and restful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Kevin Jones on?
He's just joined. He's allowed to talk now.
Excellent. Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Jones. I live on an island in Puget Sound. King County treasures our island. Our forests support their 30-year forest plan to expand green spaces which sustain habitat, stream functions, carbon storage, clean air, and cool waters and air temperatures. But our forests are threatened. Every summer, we see the threat growing larger and coming closer. No wonder the Vashon-Mory Community Council passed a motion on December 20 of 2021 calling on King County to pass building codes which required heat pumps for space and water heating in new buildings. Our community passed this motion with overwhelming support. The motion passed by 97%. We care about making buildings more efficient and less climate polluting. Our forests depend on it. Given the wildfire escalation from longer and hotter summer weather, our lives may also depend on it. Please pass these amendments. Build better buildings, save a forest, protect our lives and livelihoods, and I thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today.
Thank you. Is Jennifer still on?
She's no longer logged in.
Okay. Is Scott Peterson?
No.
No? Okay. Patricia Harris?
Not with us.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up that was not on the sheet?
No one has signed up before our cutoff, so we might... Anybody want to provide testimony here?
Excellent.
Approach the podium and state your name.
Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. My name is Andrea Hoekleitner. I actually submitted my information via email earlier today. I am representing the over 600 members of our building association, the Central Washington Home Builders Association. We are building the residential homes here in Central Washington. We have six counties that we represent, and unfortunately, they couldn't all be here today. They're out there doing what we asked them to do, which is to build homes. And we care very much about the energy effectiveness of these homes that we are building. However, unfortunately, these current regulations prevent us from building homes that actually meet the demands of prevent us from building homes that actually meet the demands of our clients and our customers. People can't afford to build these homes, and unfortunately, um I don't have enough time to speak to all the issues that are currently facing um currently affected by these amendments. We would urge you to consider delaying these amendments uh until uh the next code cycle. Uh, I would like to reiterate uh both Steve and Ty's comments uh not to move forward at this time. While we understand there are limited options, these don't provide the necessary uh flexibility to create the homes that we need in our in our home or in our state. We care about making homes energy efficient. However, these regulations prohibit our members from building the homes that we truly need. So I would urge you to delay uh and make the changes that uh have been submitted and written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak and provide public testimony? Okay, is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to?
I have Ruth Sawyer.
Okay, did you say Ruth?
Ruth.
Ruth, if you state your full name and who you represent?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, floor is yours.
Great. Uh, this is Ruth Sawyer. I am representing the Washington State CR Club. I'll keep my my message brief. Um, I just wanted to ask the the State Building Code Council to pass the amendments um to protect strong codes and ensure that new buildings in this state are as climate-friendly and cost-effective as possible. Um, we spent, we spent a lot of hours this summer talking to people all over, all over the state about, you know, what we need to do to to move forward and protect our climate um to the extent we can. And we talked a lot about buildings. Um, so a lot of people are thinking about it. Um, we talked about what we need to do. We talked about how we have the technologies that we need to make it happen. Yeah, and we're we're excited to to see this move forward. And um I know we've turned in thousands of comments on this. The public is continuing to weigh in. Um, and yeah, really, really in support of of the strongest climate-friendly codes that that we can have. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have no more hands at the moment.
Okay. Anyone on Zoom, if you have public testimony that you would like to provide and haven't done so yet? You can raise your hand and we can call on you. We'll give that a minute. Okay. Okay, public testimony can be provided until 2 PM today. At this time, we'll we'll put up a um share screen on the recording that says that if you have testimony, please raise your hand in the attendees list at that time. We will continue to record and take that public testimony at that time. And again, that'll be available until 2 PM. We will also resume recording if anyone shows up in person to provide testimony.
There we go.
Okay, let me get my timer. Okay, Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Jennifer Gilliland. I'm with the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. Um, normally Dwayne Johnland would be who would be speaking with you today, um but he asked me to um provide some testimony on his behalf. Um, I just wanted to let you know that at the Department of Construction Inspections, we strongly prefer Option 1. We feel like there are several virtues virtues to Option 1, not the least of which is that it sticks most closely to the council's original charge to the Energy Code Technical Advisory Group, which was to solve the problem created by the Ninth Circuit Court decision while leaving everything else in the code alone and intact. Um, now there is one item in this option that you could argue is not strictly necessary for compliance with this court ruling, and that's the electrification readiness paragraph. Um, that was originally placed in Option 1 to minimize the future cost of a switchover to heat pumps. Like, you know, for instance, if it was required by some future legislation. But that being said, it's not strictly necessary to comply with ECPCA. So um Seattle Department of Construction Inspections will support the council either in keeping or removing the paragraph. Option 1 is good for everyone, we think, um, most of the stakeholders. Um, obviously, one thing we like for SDCI is that our plans and examiners and inspectors will be able to find all the details of this compliance path in the same place in the code. Uh, owners and engineers that are considering using the fossil fuel option can see the whole picture upfront, allowing them to confidential confidently weigh the costs and advantages for their own projects. Meanwhile, it doesn't clutter up the rest of the code with complicated exceptions and requirements, so it makes life easier on the applicants. And finally, it it makes removing the whole pathway very clean just in case in the future, um, there's future legislation or a court decision renders it unnecessary, so it would be easy to extract it. And so uh we definitely support the council moving forward um with Option 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Scott, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
What's the limit?
Three minutes, sir.
Uh, thank you, by the way. Um, thank you for remembering me. I don't know if that's good or bad. My name's Scott Peterson. I work uh from Richland, Washington. I work with the Northwest Gas Association uh who uh opposes uh these changes to the energy code that serve as a de facto ban on natural gas in new construction, both commercial and residential. So we're asking uh the council to um uh to oppose these new rules uh that uh further restrict uh even even more than the previous uh energy code that was adopted over this uh this year. Uh, this even further restricts the ability of natural gas to be introduced into new homes. We oppose this for a lot of reasons. Uh, one is people just don't want it. In our, in Independence survey research, 65% of Washingtonians want energy choice. They want the ability to have natural gas in their homes and uh with all due respect, this unelected council is not speaking for the people of Washington who want natural gas. Why do they want it? It's great. It's a nicer heat in your home. Uh, the ban, although it doesn't mention stoves, is a de facto ban on all gas in homes. So this means uh no gas fireplaces, no gas stoves for the most part uh in new construction and uh people want it. They prefer gas uh for cooking. They they just prefer it. And so we're asking the council to listen to the people who are most affected by these decisions. Now, the council does have a statutory obligation uh around efficiency in homes and um its own research shows they're on track to meet that efficiency obligation in 2030
One minute.
without changing these codes. You're on track to do it just with the 2018 codes. So the decision to ban natural gas is um not a practical decision so much as an ideological decision. So let people choose for themselves what they want in their homes. Uh, lastly, the gas industry continues uh to improve its system. Not only is it a huge system uh that delivers energy uh into Washington uh that works in power outages, gas stoves, and gas fireplaces, uh but um they continue, they're required by law to decarbonize, which they're on track to meeting and they're showing how they do it. So we're asking the council to to listen to the people uh and do what we think is the right thing for Washingtonians.
Thank you. Is Patricia Harris on?
Nope.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has their, wants to raise their hand and provide public testimony?
Yes, Patricia Harris is on.
Oh, I see her now.
Okay, Patricia?
All right.
We can't hear you, Patricia. Cut out.
We muted herself.
All right. Now you can hear me now.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, I um want to speak as one of those citizens of Washington. Um, I happen to live in Seattle, but I'm hoping that you will pass these amendments to protect the strong codes and ensure that new buildings in Washington are as climate-friendly and cost-effective as possible. I live in a building with an electric stove. A, I did live before in a building with gas water, gas stove, gas furnace. Since I've moved into a house without gas, I have had less difficulty with my asthma. And I think that cleaning up things in our house environment, in our larger buildings, is important. So I hope you'll pass those amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time, Dustin?
Sure.
Okay. If you have public testimony you'd like to provide, raise your hand and we will uh resume recording. Okay, Jeff, if you'd like to state your full name and who you represent, your time will begin.
And he'll need to unmute. There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm new at this stuff. My name is Jeff Hansel. I'm with Swift Water Custom Homes. I'm a member of the Central Washington Home Builders Association. Uh, I've been in the business for 42 years and have built homes uh all over the state of Washington, currently building in the central Washington area. And uh the, I guess I I would like to uh testify to uh request that we skip this code cycle for the adoption and reconsider this in 2024. Uh, everything that's come down the pike at us with the recent code changes have been very difficult for us to integrate into the home building uh that we're doing uh specifically in a high alpine climate. Uh, it's just causing us to do uh several things that are outside of our construction norm. The uh additional costs that are uh placed on or burdened on the homeowners or the purchasers of our homes is significant. Some of the most recent code changes have increased our costs by anywhere from fifteen to $25,000. And the uh current code uh change that you're considering in my estimation will add probably another $25,000 to $30,000 uh in cost for uh our homes that we build. As we look at the incremental payback in terms of energy savings, it's uh very minor. We're not uh achieving the energy savings that uh we're investing in. Uh, beyond that, I think the uh various supply chain issues we're experiencing around the country have made it very difficult for us to find the materials that we need to use to implement. Uh, some of the things like the uh requirement for, you know, something like a heat pump hot water tank. Uh, very challenging to to use in some areas. Yes.
Sorry, I was just letting you know you had a minute left.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. But I guess I would uh very much encourage uh you to uh uh skip adoption of this code cycle and consider it next year. So we have time to go through, do more uh research into uh how we could implement some of these code changes, but also consider whether these uh code changes are uh incrementally acceptable in terms of uh cost versus energy savings. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone at this time that would like to provide public testimony? If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand.
We have Dee Danton.
Okay, Dee Danton, please state your name and who you represent, then your time will begin.
Uh, yeah, hi, my name is David Danton. Uh, we're the company TSO Homes, DBA Inspire Homes. We build the out of five locations, we build homes all over the state of Washington, and I am in Burlington, Washington.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I too uh know Jeff and and uh and uh state similar to Jeff that uh right now, you know, the payback for the current energy code is difficult for our customers to understand and and see how they're truly getting the financial benefit of these. Um, and uh by extending these to what the the uh proposals are that I've seen so far are very expensive to do. Uh, the materials to do some of them um are gonna most likely be impossible to find. I've told, been told that we're very tied in with manufacturers and distributors. And and they've said that uh some of the items, uh if this goes into effect, will not be able to be supplied in the state in uh in a rapid enough speed and will hold construction up immensely. Um, and the cost of that right now, our customers are already having difficulties uh finding the dollars to uh consider building a home today, and this is just gonna exasperate that for what half the state is in a a very mild climate. And some of the proposed items uh make sense maybe in more harsh climates, but in half the state, uh the the uh proposals that are being made simply financially don't make sense for customers. Uh, home cost uh is a difficult, difficult thing for buyers right now, and this is just gonna add, as Jeff said, another twenty to thirty thousand dollars of expenses. And I think that that really needs to be looked at before this uh before our new code uh is implemented.
Okay, anything further?
I think that is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, I'm always available.
No others.
Okay, if there's anyone else that would like to provide public testimony, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, at this time we'll stop recording if you Okay, Paul, please state your full name and who you represent, and at that time, your three minutes will begin.
My name actually is Stuart Dreebeck with a direct contractors. I am government affairs chair of Olympia Master Builders. Uh, builder for 35 years.
Thank you.
And I, okay, um, the heat continual increase in cost of housing is making housing unaffordable to nearly everyone now. The ratcheting up as high as it's going on uh every level it purely makes it less affordable. The elimination of natural gas is very short-sighted and there is no way to uh make up for that kind of therm loss in the in the electrical um infrastructure that now exists. There isn't any reason to change from where we are and we should adopt the 2024 IBC Energy Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else at this time who would like to provide public testimony? Okay. We will stop recording and then resume if anyone has anything further. Okay, Mike, if you'd like to state your full name and who you represent, then your three minutes will begin.
Can you uh hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, Mike Nick from here.
Okay, yeah, Mike Nickram here, Newport West, LLC, um, out of Bellevue, Washington. Um, I'd like to speak on behalf of energy security. Um, we, if we move to an all-electric system, we will lose energy security across our state. Uh, case in point, last week. The wind only blew forty miles an hour and Bellevue lost two, PSE lost two thousand customers. In an urban neighborhood of Bellevue, two thousand customers were without power for twelve hours. Some eighteen years ago, as, as a builder, uh, here in the Kirkland area. The wind blew, hit about fifty, sixty miles an hour. And PSE lost power to well over a quarter of a million customers, lost power for a week. Had it not been for natural gas as a backup system for people's energy security, there would have been no heat, no cooking. Um, very little, uh, habitability of homes across the greater Puget Sound. When I was a kid, the Columbus Day storm came through in October of nineteen sixty-two. Hit a hundred miles an hour. When I was a kid, we didn't have near the trees that we have now today in our neighborhoods. That windstorm's coming again, and when it does, it's gonna blow down trees and limbs. It will collapse the overhead infrastructure. Without natural gas, people literally will die. So until PSE can put together an energy infrastructure. Give us a security that we have today, we cannot ban natural gas. And on the side, through natural gas systems, we can lower our CO2 output. I'm speaking to you in a truck that I converted, one of, one of about seven trucks I've converted, they run on natural gas. My truck runs thirty percent cleaner CO2 than gasoline vehicles. We must maintain our natural gas infrastructure until we have one hundred percent energy security liability. Hundred percent equal to what we have now with natural gas. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public testimony? Okay, seeing none at this time, the. Public hearing will go until two PM. So if you have public testimony, raise your hand in the Zoom and, uh, we'll go back live.
Recording.
We're recording, okay. Justin, go ahead and state your full name and who you represent.
Yes, yes, my name is, I'm sorry.
Uh, and then after you do that, your three minutes will start. Go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, my name is Justin Willis. I'm here representing as co-founder of the Home Building Energy Efficiency Academy. Out of Olympia, Washington. And, uh, appreciate your time and, uh, allowing me to provide testimony. And what I'd like to do is, uh, provide a quick testimony into the fact that. Uh, I've traveled all over the United States, talking with multiple builders, national builders, regional builders, uh, talking to them about their issues that they're having and. One of the biggest issues is not really being able to sell inventory because of the high mortgage rates, the volatility of the market, uh, client affordability issues. And it's really stemming mostly because of the interest rates are so high and where they're gonna continue to be, but. They're actually having to cut, uh, from their bottom line profits just to be able to give up the concessions so that consumers can afford their homes. And this is, this is relevant between DR Horton, Lennar, KB Home, you know, all the way down to the small little mom and pop builders that are, they're building, uh, custom on their lots. And so. What I've done is I've created a, a path forward for them to be able to take advantage of appraisal processes, mostly green appraisal processes. That give them value for building a more energy efficient, higher performance home. And essentially take that value from building a better home and utilize that as a, an incentive from the seller. So. It actually helps with affordability. And essentially where I'm going with this is that that's all great when it's combined with the twenty twenty-four energy code. Uh, as I've read it and as I've seen it, uh, this essentially provides a path forward performance base instead of prescriptive. And every builder that I've talked with, uh, is well under sixty hers, which is really what the single family green bond program for Freddie and Fanny. It kind of stipulates that they must have at least a sixty hers, Energy Star compliant, three point one right now, one to three point two here soon. And they're all, most of the builders that I know are hitting that, uh, but they're not getting any value for it. And so. That's because they're, they're following the prescriptive path, putting these pieces and components and techniques together based on the prescriptive path, but if they had a performance based path.
One minute remaining.
I appreciate that. It could actually lower the cost of construction and then get additional value from the green appraisals that have been around for decades. Uh, and actually mostly help save an appraisal industry because right now appraisers are hurting, workforce development is hurting, builders are hurting, consumers are hurting. So I've got multiple case studies and a lot of paperwork, uh, that I've put together. Uh, to be more than happy to share with anybody to be interested in that, but basically here to say that, uh, I wish that we could look at the twenty twenty-four adoption code a little quicker. And I appreciate your time for testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time that would like to provide public testimony? Okay, seeing none. If you would like to, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll resume recording. Thank you. Okay, Debbie, if you'd like to state your name and who you represent, after that, your three minutes will begin.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, Debbie Boyd, uh, co-owner of real estate of the South Sound in Olympia, Washington.
Go ahead.
All right, um, I urge you to skip this code cycle and adopt the twenty twenty-four I E C C as soon as possible. This code is overcomplicated, eliminates choices by penalizing gas users. We have added way too much to the cost of housing. Home prices are already high with the cost of permits, building. And interest rates that we are pricing out our home buyers in Washington State. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other hands for public comment?
Nope.
Okay. We will stop recording and if anyone has further public testimony, uh, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll call on you. Okay, Kurt, if you wanna state your full name and who you're representing, after that, your three minutes will start.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Kurt Swanson. I'm with the Washington State Association. Of the United Association of Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, and HVAC Refrigeration Technicians. I'm also a proud United Association Local Thirty-Two member, and I'm a former natural gas worker. The WSA represents over nine thousand five hundred UA members working in Washington State. I speak in opposition to these proposed code changes. And ask that the SBCC not implement these code changes. Our members have built significant portions of the natural gas system in Washington State. They work every day to supply energy to homes and businesses in our region. Our members are proud to work on natural gas systems and they earn family level wages and good benefits. And they're proud to be in the energy supply business. Our members do not agree with these proposed restrictions on natural gas, and they believe that this level of interference and energy choice. Is an overreach by the State Building Code Council. Adopting these changes will place additional cost burdens on energy consumers in our state. Our members serve and interact, interact with these energy consumers daily. We do not agree with proposed code changes. As they serve as a de facto ban on natural gas. We know that the businesses and homeowners that use this valuable energy source agree with us. And so we respectfully ask the State Building Code Council. Please do not ban our state's citizens' access to natural gas. And please do not limit our citizens' energy choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public testimony? Okay, uh, we'll stop recording and if anyone has.
I have a Michael Courier.
Okay, Michael, go ahead and state your full name and who you represent, and then your time will start.
Hey, thank you, Chair. Uh, my name is Michael Courier. I'm with Cigna Drafting and Design Services. I do home design for new construction additions, remodels in the South Sound area. I'm speaking on behalf of just my company. And I agree with many of the points I've heard today and brought up by previous speakers. I agree that we should skip this code cycle and move on to the adoption of the twenty twenty-four energy code at a future date. Uh, mainly this would give us in the industry, especially on the design side, ample opportunity to become familiar with a completed energy code. And how we would apply it to our, you know, our designs. As a home designer, part of my job is to help my clients navigate the already confusing code options and credit choices that they see. So me having a rock solid understanding on all of the options available is pretty critical to control major construction costs. That will impact homeowners directly. So again, please consider skipping this code cycle in favor of adopting the twenty twenty-four energy code at an appropriate time. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll go ahead and stop recording. If you have any further public testimony, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll start the recording again. Okay, Bart, if you wanna state your full name and who you're representing, your three minutes will start.
Thank you so much. My name is Bart Hanson. And I am the Executive Director of the Building Industry Association of Clark County. And also a Vancouver City Council member. And I do not speak on behalf of the Vancouver City Council. I wanna make that very clear upfront. So, um, to start with, I wanna thank you for taking the time to take testimony. Uh, I know that, uh, you get a lot of folks that, uh, wanna. Have their three minutes and I'm gonna go ahead and jump right in. I'm taking a look here and, and first and foremost, I would like to skip this code cycle and adopt the two thousand twenty-four International Energy Code. And the reason I, I would like to go down this path is based on, uh. The affordable housing issues that we are, uh, we're trying to work through here in Vancouver, Washington and Clark County. We have in the city of Vancouver about seventy-five hundred units that we're behind in building. We need to be building about fifteen hundred units a year to keep up with the growth. People are moving to Clark County in record numbers, and especially Vancouver, and keeping up with that growth can be rather difficult. By adding, you know, more stringent codes to energy, um, measures that go on the homes. That is going to add to the cost of the homes and further exacerbate the problem. So, you know, I also worked at, um, the local power utility here for twenty-three years. So these measures are going to be difficult to achieve in order to keep the price down. Um, I'm a big fan of incentives. I'm not a big fan of mandates. That, that drives people to and builders to want to get there, but. It's the energy code being so stringent that can be difficult on affordable housing. And when you look at the price of a home here in Clark County, your average is around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our youth. Are not gonna have the opportunity to get into a starter home. We're doing anything we can to find starter homes, and when you look at the growth of ADUs in our community. And you look at the lack of land, um, it's difficult to achieve this and every little bit helps. So that would be my two cents and I, I really appreciate, uh, you taking the time. And once again, um, everything I'm saying does not represent the city of Vancouver. These are my personal, um, uh, comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time who would like to provide public testimony?
Joshua Mergans.
Joshua, go ahead and set your full name and who you represent, and then your time will begin.
Uh, my name is Joshua Mergans. I'm, uh, Principal and Co-owner of Bound Structural Engineering, and I'm speaking both on behalf of myself and of the company.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to echo many of the concerns that have been raised by others in our industry. Uh, in particular, I believe we need to better address the vulnerability of rural homes during winter conditions that. Could leave them without electricity for extended periods of time and. Kind of the necessity of alternative sources of heat for the safety of those occupants. Also, given that we're nearly through this code cycle, I believe it makes sense to move forward to the twenty twenty-four Washington State Energy Code with these considerations in mind for potential revisions. Um, and that's a, that's essentially it. So I thank you folks for the opportunity to share my concerns and. Encourage everyone to move forward to the twenty twenty-four Washington State Energy Code, considering, uh, a lot of the public comments that have been made.
Okay, thank you. We have anyone else, Dustin?
No hands at the moment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and stop recording, and if anyone has further public testimony, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll start it up again. Thank you. This hearing is being held to consider testimony on the currently filed proposals for WAC fifty-one eleven R, the Washington State Energy Code Residential Provisions. And WAC fifty-one eleven C, the Washington State Energy Code Commercial Provisions. All testimony presented at this hearing, along with all written comments received, will be part of the official hearing record for this proposal. A final decision on adopting this rule proposal will be made on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. On behalf of the SBCC, thank you. For participating in this hearing. This hearing is, stands adjourned at two oh two PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.